James, would you like to do a mic check real quick?
Sure, can you hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Is there any background noise, by the way? Just curious.
A tiny bit.
But not too bad.
You're audible, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody ready? Okay, good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, June 25th. Let's go ahead and call this special meeting to order. If I could have the clerk, please call the role.
Supervisor Abigail Gah.
Here.
Supervisor Yun.
Here.
Supervisor Allenberg.
Here.
Vice President Arenas.
Here.
President Lee.
Good afternoon, President, as well.
You have a call.
Thank you. So if you're in the chambers and require the Spanish or Vietnamese translation, the devices are available at the back of chambers. Clerk in this issue of the setup and translation also available on Zoom using the interpretation button. As a general reminder for the public, commentary staff, and those of us on the dais, please speak clearly and at the measured pace directly into the microphone to ensure accurate translation. I'm going to ask Supervisor Yun, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Sorry.
Please stand if you're able. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, no, no, you shouldn't, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so today we have this special meeting to consider recommendation relating to the upcoming vacancy in the office of our county's assessor. James and, oh, gee, James is not here, sorry. Tony, I believe you have a presentation on this one, please.
Yeah, I'll just say a few words, President Lee and board members, to frame this up and then turn it over to the county executive who's on Zoom to see if he has anything to add. And we do have lead deputy county counsel, Mary Hannah Weir, and registered voters, Matt Morelos here, looks like John Mills as well, to address any questions that might come up. As you mentioned, Assessor Larry Stone submitted a letter of resignation on Monday, June 23rd, which states that his resignation from the office of the assessor will take effect on July 6th, which means that his last day will be July 6th. And by operation of state law, his second-in-command assistant, assistant assessor Greg Monte Verde will become the acting assessor on July 7th. There are two recommended actions before the board that I'm going to summarize briefly for you and which are articulated in the legislative file. The first recommended action pertains specifically to the special election. Under the county charter, the board must call a special election to fill Assessor Stone's seat within 120 days of the vacancy occurring. In other words, within 120 days of July 7th. So the first recommended action is to adopt a resolution calling for a special election to occur on November 4th, which is the general election day. It is exactly 120 days from July 7th. The resolution also calls for a runoff, if no candidate receives a majority of the votes, to occur within 56 days of November 4th, as required by statute, which is December 30th, 2025. As an operational matter, December 30th is the earliest date that the ROV could feasibly hold a runoff election. The resolution also includes several other discreet actions to streamline the election process that are really related to just the tight timeline that we're operating on here. The second recommended action pertains to the appointment of an interim assessor. The board is required, under the charter, to make an appointment of an interim assessor to serve until a new assessor is elected and seated. And there is no required timeline, I want to say that again, there's no required timeline for making such an appointment. We recommend that the appointment of an interim assessor be made at the board's first regular session after the legislative recess on August 12th. Given the very short timeline that this individual would serve as the interim assessor, we'd recommend waiving Board Policy 2.2, which involves detailed procedures that the clerk of the board follows to publicize the vacancy, invite applications, schedule interviews with the board supervisors at an open meeting, and instead just to appoint an individual. Notably, the board is going to know by August 12th who's running for the special election because the nomination period closes on August 8th. So you'll have awareness when you make that appointment, either way, as to who's actually in the running for the election. So I'll stop there and turn it over to the county executive to see if he has anything that he wants to add on top of those comments.
Thank you, Tony. Apologies to be joining you by Zoom. I'm actually in Medford on my way to Portland, Oregon. But just wanted to add one thing to what Tony mentioned. I think he laid it out very well. Some board members will recall that it wasn't actually that long ago that the board had to follow somewhat similar procedures due to the unexpected vacancy in the office of the sheriff. At that time, because the vacancy arose so close in time to the already scheduled election for the normal end of the term for the sheriff under the provisions of the charter, there wasn't a need to have a separate special election. The board did, however, have to move forward with a temporary appointment into the position. And at that time, the board appointed the then-under sheriff, Ken Binder, to serve. So we'll, you know, we're happy to answer questions. We've got folks here. I think that procedurally, the actions are relatively straightforward and pretty much dictated, at least with respect to the election, pretty much dictated by the timelines and by the applicable state laws and county charter.
I think other than that, we'll turn it over for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Tony. Let's see, should I check how many public, how many bodies in the public would like to speak today? Rhonda, can you tell us?
I currently have one in chambers and two, three online. It looks like we are holding at three.
Okay, let's just do two minutes each, please.
All right. We will start with our in-person public speaker, David Newslinger. And at this point, we are going to close our public comment. Go ahead.
Ranked choice voting is also known as instant runoff voting because it holds a runoff using the ranked choices of the people who vote. Ranked choice voting in this situation would save about $13 million by eliminating the runoff that we may have. No runoff, if there's no runoff required, then in our regular elections, our normal elections, then it would be a small savings, but we would have a large democratic benefit because an election during a general, sorry, a ranked choice election during a general election.
Yeah, Tony, I see your lights are on, go ahead.
Yeah, could I ask if the clerk of the board could just pause the timer? I just want to point out that ranked choice voting and the discussion about ranked choice voting is outside the scope of the noticed item before us. It's not on the table for this particular election. So at the board's, at the chair's discretion, but it does fall outside the scope of the noticed item.
Thank you.
Continue?
Thank you.
Am I done, or shall I continue?
Anything else to add? I mean, we heard that you want to have ranked choice voting to save money.
Why don't I just say that I hope that you'll adopt ranked choice voting when it comes before you in the future? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ryan, and I'm a resident of Santa Clara County. I understand this year's budget decisions were incredibly difficult due to the deficit we're facing, and holding a special election will cost the county millions that we simply do not have. However, ranked choice voting would prevent costly runoff elections and bring more efficiency to our democratic process. It is a practical solution that saves both money and boosts voter engagement. And so I urge you to support ranked choice voting when it comes to the board, or when it returns to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Chesson.
Thank you. My name is Steve Chesson. Although I am a member of the Citizens Advisory Commission on Elections, I am speaking as an individual. I live in Napview. It's too bad that the $13 million or actually $26 million, if there's going to be two elections, that money to pay for those elections couldn't come out of the assessor's budget, since he's the one who's responsible for this being, having to be a special election as opposed to completing his term. But I did want to say that, you know, we're facing a significant budget deficit. And if the county had implemented ranked choice voting by this point, we could save that $13 million from not having to do a second election. So I hope that when ranked choice voting comes back before this board, in October, I believe, that you will move forward with it and adopt an ordinance to implement ranked choice voting so we will never have to face two runoff election again. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Chris Harris.
Hi, thank you for, thank you for letting me make my comment today. I am a member of California Rank Choice Voting Coalition. And, you know, the budget is tight, and every decision about how we spend money should be strategic. And ranked choice voting ensures that elections are decided efficiently without sacrificing voter participation. It also encourages, we get a higher voter turnout when it's one ranked choice voting election versus a primary and a general. So it also allows more diverse candidates and discourages divisive campaigning. So I urge you to support ranked choice voting when it returns to our vote. Thank you very much.
And that concludes the speakers who had their hands raised before we close the queue.
Okay, let's go and close the public comment period of this one. Let me look down the line here to my colleague. So any questions and comments I have? Oh, okay, well, this is, this is going to be easy. Is it? Well, Tony, so today, what are we supposed to do? Why don't you go through the options we have today, any vote that we need to take to move this forward?
So all that we would need would be a motion for the recommended actions, which would adopt the resolution calling a special election, and that would waive Board Policy 2.2 and allow for the appointment of an individual as the interim assessor on August 12th.
So moved.
Okay, so that's the recommended, that action A and B, I will second that as well. Let's see, you have a question? I do have a couple of questions, Tony, just to clarify. Oh, sorry, you have a question?
That's okay, you can go first.
Sure. My first question, actually, is this is not an option. We absolutely have to do it based on our charter. I believe you said it in this on the last round. I just want to make it very clear to the public.
That's correct. The special election has to be called within 120 days of the vacancy occurring under our charter. So there's no choice here other than to, to call the special election and to incur the expenses associated with it.
Right. Now, given the really short amount of time we have between now and November 4th we're talking about, and this county has never done this, ranked choice voting has been talked about, is this even physically possible if we want to do it?
No, it's not. The, in order to do ranked choice voting, there'd have to be an ordinance that would be adopted. I believe that administration has estimated a two-year timeline to put in place the operations and technical requirements in order to carry out ranked choice voting. So it's absolutely outside the question.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Any more? Oh, Supervisor Yun, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So you, Tony, you said earlier, as a function of California state law, that the second-in-command in the county assessor's office will be the acting or interim assessor?
They'll act, they'll, they'll take over as the acting assessor. That's Greg Monte Verde in this case, yeah.
As a function of state law?
As a function of state law, correct.
Until, until this board makes an appointment, in case that's someone else.
That's correct. So if the board appoints on August 12th, that person would take over as the interim, and Greg Monte Verde would no longer serve as the acting.
So waiving, should we waive Board Policy 2.2? So waiving, should we waive Board Policy 2.2 today? It means that on August 12th, the recommended action on the agenda will be to appoint Greg?
No, no. It means that 2.2 calls for detailed procedures regarding the clerk of the board taking applications, there being interviews that occur, and so on and so forth. This, all that waiving 2.2 would mean is that that process is set aside and then you, as a board, would have the ability to just name, to make a motion and appoint an interim assessor, but it doesn't have to be Greg. It could be any individual that is a voter of Santa Clara County and meets the qualifications of an assessor.
Now, if on August 12th, I'll use I statements, let's say, let's say I, we waive Board Policy 2.2 today, we waive all the requirements for posting and inviting applications for this appointment, but then on August 12th, I change my mind, and I feel that we need to have this very transparent process that allows for as many members of the public to engage as possible, do I get to reroute it at that time?
You could certainly make a motion supervisor, and if a majority of the board decides it wants to reinstate 2.2 and follow those procedures, it could do so. It would just have to happen at a subsequent meeting.
As a, as a general policy, as a general rule for myself, I would not want to waive Board Policy 2.2. I feel that these policies and procedures are set in place so that our democracy, our democratic process continues to take place in the absence of, of an elected, for whatever reasons they vacate their seats, that for, to make this opportunity available for people to say, I want to submit and be considered for this, for a position that is, is elected. I think the vetting process, the interview process, and having it done in the open is, is good. It's, it's a value of our democratic process. But as with any general rule, there are certain exceptions. And in this case, there's a very technical, it's, there's a lot of technical requirements for the role of assessor. It just doesn't mean you win an election. You have to meet these technical requirements and qualifiers and that we have a second-in-command that is familiar, is operational, and fits all the technical requirements for this. So it was important for me, because this is a democratic process that we all hold dear, to explain myself today that should we waive Board Policy 2.2, I do it not with joy or great delight, I don't, I don't, and I'm not assuming anybody is doing that too, but this is out of the norm for how I want to govern. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Abicoga?
Thank you, President Lee. Definitely, I, this is a very unfortunate situation and I don't want to, I don't think we, it's hard to stomach the, the cost of this, but we really have no legal options otherwise, so I will support this. My question actually, I was trying to find it here, but I may have missed it. How long is this term? So is it until the 2026, or is it till, is it a full four-year term?
Correct. It would be until the 2020, November 2026 would be the election. I'm just going to confirm, yes, that's correct.
So then there would be another potential primary in June?
Correct.
And then a general in November of 2026. All right, thank you.
Yes, Vice President.
Thank you. This is, also I agree with the sentiment in general that this is a very difficult position to put the board in as we are all elected and look forward to a process that offers us an opportunity to, the voters, to make a choice about who represents them. In this case, and I don't know the personal reasons, but here we are, trying to make this, this choice and not, I'm going to say, this is the second time, I think, for me, this is coming up, although I didn't have to vote on an appointment when I left the council. I did leave the council to come to, to, to the board when I won my race, leaving a spot. And I had initially supported an appointment process. And I have really reflected on that choice. And actually, I, I agree with making sure that our community votes our, our folks in. And so I look forward to ensuring that we follow the process that's already set up where we have an automatic person coming in that we know is qualified to do the job, that is certainly doing it peripherally, not in the position of, of the assessor, but pretty much doing a job of an assessor, or could very well step into that. And, and then making sure that we have our community making the ultimate decision. And I want to ensure that we, we keep that at that point where we make, we allow for our community to vote folks in and that there isn't a, an appointment process that politicizes our decision to select the next county assessor, and we don't take that from, from folks. So I obviously made the, the motion today, that's where I stand, that's where I'll continue to stand come August 12th. Thank you.
Okay, no further comments, let's go take the role.
Supervisor Abicoga?
Aye.
Supervisor Yun?
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
Yes.
Vice President Arenas?
Yes.
President Lee?
I as well.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to the end of the agenda. I previously announced in the last board meeting that the next board supervisor meeting would be August 12th, and I basically lied because we meet it just now. So this time I'll try again. I hope that we don't have to do another special meeting before August 12th at 9:30. All right. Thank you, everybody, for pulling this so quickly together. Really appreciate it, really do. Enjoy the summary session, thank you.